For the June 2021 USD 350 Board of Education Order, welcome visitors. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. President, we move that the Board of Board's agenda is presented.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Consent agenda.
You'll notice there's two additional items on there. This is just to grant the Central Office the budget authority to move things around, finalize any of the books, and then approve the destruction of financial documents and keep those for five years and then get rid of them. So just standard procedure there.
Mr. President, we move the Board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Classified Staff Handbook.
We talked about adding a, under the workers' compensation. We've been working with our provider. One thing they suggest, just as a blanket recommendation, is to have a healthcare provider identified. So we know that this doctor, if you're injured at work, you need to go see this doctor. If you choose not to do that, then it's limited on how much the policy will pay for. With our situation, it's not ideal to do that. We have people driving from Sterling and Grapevine and Craft and trying to identify a doctor in each of those areas. Isn't real practical. It hasn't harmed us not having that because we did have this statement about social recreational activities. If you're at work and you're choosing to participate with the basketball scrimmage over launch, that's your choice. That's not required as part of your duties. You're making that choice. It's not a performance task that you're required to do. So that's not covered in the report. It's not a new policy or anything. You're just adding that statement in there. Other than that, nothing's changed.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I move that the Board approve the Classified Staff Handbook as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Classified Staff Handbook as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. Capital Outlet Plan.
Nothing's really changed on this since we last looked at it. One thing that we may consider doing, really with this plan, we're just looking to approve the left-hand column for this upcoming school year. Everything else is just kind of for planning purposes. Heating and air, replacing rooftop units. We may be able to use some of that federal money for that purpose. So maybe we'll be able to do them all at once in the next summer. So that will help out our bottom line on our capital outlet plan. I do have the library roof in here with the foundation investments paying half. We've not discussed that with the library board. We briefly discussed it with the foundation. So that's not a done deal or anything. Nothing major this year. We'll have our bus. Any questions on any of that?
Tennis court and the track, how far out?
They could be done anytime. The tennis court, if we recover, it extends to be one to maybe five years. Track would just be a top coating that's there. Extend the life there. Track's in okay shape. Some of those cracks are starting to show through again. Sure knew that wasn't going to fix it 100% to do that. You'd have to go down the dirt, pour your concrete. It's a 305 mile per hour.
The tennis court hasn't worked and done anything for us. I know we've had some issues since it went in.
No, it's mostly just the color anywhere the water sits. Just needs clean periodically.
Mr. President, we move that the Board approved the Capital Outlet Plan as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Capital Outlet Plan as presented. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried.
My intention on those federal funds is to get a team together, get some input from board members and staff members. Get our heads together and come up with a plan. But what we want to do with this plan is...
When do you think we'll have guidance on more of what we're comfortable doing at law?
It's pretty much there from the state.
Okay.
So what we need to do is put together a plan that says we want to spend it on these things, and then they will approve or disapprove. So they've got a team at KSB to do that and say, hey, maybe that's not what you want to put in your plan. What goes to the state boards? The state board will approve all those plans as well. We don't have to have a full plan in place that we want to spend every single dollar. How we want to spend every single dollar, we can add and remove. The main thing is KSB wants to approve those things.
And we have till 23?
Yes, September 23.
Capers 457.
The public employees retirement system, all of our employees are required to be a part of that. That's the state's retirement plan for people who work in education, and then there's a separate wing with us, other public employees. They've changed the plan from a true pension plan that people hired within the last six or eight years. It's more of a cash balance plan, so it's more like a 401K. It's significantly less over the life of the employee working. Somebody starting in education now, I don't know, throw out numbers, significantly less than a teacher that started 20 years ago. So there's this other option, and I think it's been around for a while, but makes it more important now that we offer this to our employees. They can contribute to a 403B annuity plan, a tax sheltered way to invest. We have that option for them with American Fidelity. And this would be just through capers, basically the same thing. They can contribute more money to their retirement. So we think that's an important option for folks. The Board would just need to take action on these resolutions too, with this resolution and join your agreement authorizing this to be done by before now. It doesn't cost us anything in contributing to it. So I'd recommend approving that resolution and joining your agreement.
Mr. President, I move the Board to approve the resolution authorizing the deferred compensation plan in the joint agreement as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the resolution authorizing a deferred compensation plan in the joint agreement as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. Insurance policy.
So we've been worried about EMC, updating the deductibles and premiums. We looked at that municipal pool, was a little concerned about that last year, you know, if that was going to work for us. The deductibles have gone from 5,000 to 10,000. So 10,000 would be just for wind and hail. Their proposal was to go up to 25,000. That first three pages there, 36, 37, and 38, represents that premium cost. So if we have a $25,000 deductible for wind and hail, the cost increases about 8.5%, lower, almost 9%. Another option would be to keep the deductible at $10,000 for wind and hail. So everything would be 10,000. We're talking for a property amount for these. We're just talking about major events also. So that premium cost would increase about 11%. I talked to the gentleman with that municipal pool. He said their pool saw about a 10% increase. So I didn't ask specifically for a quote there this year, but I know it was about 10%. It was pretty darn close last year. $1,400 was the difference.
What's our plan this year?
We've had nothing major. We've had a couple of vehicles totaled with hail. There were buses that weren't worth very much.
Did we get anything with the cyber stuff they had?
We did not. We drew that claim. So we filed and drew it. We didn't have any type of stuff in that. Just auto glass and deer. So my recommendation is to go with the lower deductible on the wind and hail. It's about an 80% payoff if we have a wind or hail within that timeframe. That justifies the increased premium cost, but...
I think I'm okay with that. I would like to see that as a quote next year. I mean, we talked about that stuff last year, and I know it's been a crazy year, but I think every couple of years doesn't hurt to look at it. What do you guys think?
I agree.
I've got it on my calendar that I have to hand in if it was anything about, you feel more comfortable with it.
Nothing else, at least? EMC, it does keep crazy without going anywhere.
And I feel Trey's going to work for us. It's good to have a local agent, but that's out of his control somewhere, so. We're comfortable with that. Lower deductible, a little bit higher penalty, that's my recommendation.
Mr. President, I move that the Board approve the renewal of the district's insurance policy from Act 360 and EMC in the amount of $71,368.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the renewal of the district's insurance policy from Act 360 and EMC in the amount of $71,368. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. Workers' compensation.
I don't have a quote on this. This is more, we joined this pool last year, and now we're kind of, I guess, officially members. So now we're a part of the loyalty credit program. So we can see premiums, premium credits, and then participation agreements. So kind of just formalities, continuing with this, this pool. Elisa, did you have anything on the workers' compensation stuff?
No, I mean, luckily, we don't have one thing, so I mean, that's the best place to be.
Mr. President, I move that the Board approve the loyalty credit program agreement and the member participation agreement as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the loyalty credit program agreement and the member participation agreement as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. Student supplemental insurance policy.
This is the insurance that we provide, the district provides, for students if they're injured at school or school activities. It doesn't cover everything. Students' health insurance still covers. Sometimes parents have the misconception that, well, my kid was, my kid's great dyspnea had to get stitches at school, so the school's insurance pays for that. That's not the case. It's your health insurance pays for that as a family. But this is provided to help with that. This puts some deductible costs. It's not cheap, and we, so we've got, this covers all the athletics and activities for grades six through 12. It also covers elementary for any school activities. So if they're hurt at recess or on a field trip. And then there's a second plan that's a $6,500 deductible. The first plan has a $250 deductible. The secondary plan would be like a mid catastrophic, so major injury, this would help kick in if there was a major injury. Total premium cost there is $13,327 for this year. It's 47, you see the premiums. We've gone through some changes. The previous company, the cost was just getting out of hand. So we reduced the coverage at that time, and then we switched to this new company, K&amp;K. Stayed pretty steady for a while until we got a clean history. It's used quite frequently for, by our student body. So people know it's there and they use it. So we had to add a deductible. So my recommendation is to continue with this policy. We also have a policy through the Activities Association that's a catastrophic insurance plan. So it's a $25,000 deductible. So if there'd be a major injury, I guess, member or something major like that, that covers, but that's only for seventh through 12 indication activities. So we purchased another plan, and it's through the same company, but it covers all the other kids. And that's important because our sixth graders are not covered in education's catastrophic insurance. Something you don't see very often, but could happen. So it's, I would say $600 for that. So I'd recommend going back with K&amp;K.
Is there any other companies?
There is. KSB has one, and they're working through that process, but it was $1415 to change. Yeah, we've seen it in the last...
Just to see if everything's... I don't know if there was something I could do, please.
Mr. President, I move that the Board approve the proposal for student accident insurance for K&amp;K in the amount of $13,327.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the proposal for student accident insurance for K&amp;K in the amount of $13,327. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. Board goals, strategic planning.
We talked a while back about the potential during some strategic planning, but here's our goals, our mission statement. We've not really updated that. We haven't really gone through the process to really talk about it much, but our mission and vision and what we see for our school district. And then the goal statement, we really didn't update anything at all this last year. Really, our goal was to make it through the year, honestly. So these goals have been pretty steady. Education needs our individual planning study, a local learning center. We started that, and then we really didn't have anybody recruiting on that. We still have it available for the meeting too. We have a student finish this year, wasn't really in the learning center. Technology, our textbook schedule, tracking the important student success data. We've not really done much work on that. Student success is in the cookie for social nutrition and those are things we're still working on. Recruit, retain staff. A lot of that comes down to right now, especially maintaining competitive salary benefits. A lot of this will be growing our own people, finding people in our community that can step in and do the jobs through alternative certification and those things with our teacher shortage. Facilities. This is probably where our strategic planning comes into play more so than anywhere else. We're just going to keep the lights on and keep our equipment running. How much are we going to put into, we're going to replace the roof, but where are we going to be in 15 years? That matters. Collaborative relationships with the community, funding trustability. I don't think any of these things really change, and they're still going to be up to perform. From you all, is there anything in particular we need to be looking at to update these goals? Areas of focus? I will work on getting Gary Seacrest from KSB in a month or two. At least put a visor on the phone to talk through that process and see about maybe October, November, if that's a strategic planning session, if that's what you want to do. I talked to a board member over at Burton that I know. They just went through that process. It was worth it, and so, yeah, it was good, community conversations. Talked to him a year ago. It's just we talked about it and moved on.
Thank you.
Negotiated agreements. We can go into executive session and discuss, discuss this, and that's one of the situations that we can use for executive session. I forgive them just do that for a couple of minutes. You guys want to play this?
Yeah.
So three minutes would be plenty. Just maybe.
Chair? Motion.
Mr. President, I move that the Board go into executive session to discuss changes to the teachers' negotiated agreement pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under KOMA with Mr. Meyer to be included. Now we return to open session at 7:26 in this room.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board can go into executive session to discuss changes to the teachers' negotiating agreement pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under KOMA with Mr. Meyer to be included. Now we return to open session at 7:27 in this room. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay.
So the negotiated agreement, just to summarize the changes there, is adding a technology coordinator position at 9% on the supplemental schedule, covering the increase in health insurance premium, 6% increase, and then add 1,250 to the base, board steps and columns for experience in education, and then a long-term incentive pay, paid through SIR funds, $500. All of that was summarized in the, or changed in the agreement that you have. I recommend approving that. And the teachers ratified that. They approved those changes also.
We got a motion.
Mr. President, we approve the teachers' negotiation agreement for 2021, 2022 as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the teachers' negotiating agreement for 2021, 2022 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. The disposal of excess concrete.
So back in the shop, you know, it used to be we had a metals teacher and a woods teacher, and declining enrollment. We got from just one teacher. We've got some fantastic equipment back there that some of that hasn't been used since, in my nine years here, just in function of the classes we offer. And there's some big, some big machines back there, wheels and blades. It doesn't lend itself well to just the teaching process, you know. If we were making aircraft parts, we could do it. So maybe to update some of the equipment, some smaller equipment, more updated, try to sell some of this equipment. So we've been talking about it for a few years, weeks ago, and what we should hang on to, but hopefully we can get some money out of this. I'd recommend using the online auction service. Purple Wave and Big Iron, the two that we use. I just need to talk to them and see where we can get better money. I've talked to Bryce a lot earlier. Anybody have any questions on this? Money that we get from this, we look at maybe buying another smaller CNC blade or CNC mill, something smaller than we use at Fredley for student work.
We got a motion.
Mr. President, we move the Board to approve the disposal of equipment as listed through an online auction service.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the disposal of the equipment listed through an online auction service. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. And the metal shed.
I've got three bids here. One from Eric Regal for $200, Randy Watson for $312.01, and Josh Truitt for $525. Tried to call Mr. Truitt today, left a message. I didn't hear back. We didn't ever hear back from him, did we?
Nope.
Considering he can handle it, wanted to talk through the getting it out of there without tearing stuff up before we approved it, but I think he's going to be able to get it out of there. Recommend approving the bid from Josh Truitt for $525 for metal shed.
Mr. President, I move the Board to approve the bid for metal shed for $525 from Josh Truitt.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the bid for the metal shed for $525 from Josh Truitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Hey, pay raises.
Customary procedure for us to, for this board to grant pay raises for classified staff and administrators, the same percentage as the teaching staff. That amounted to 3.1%, so that is my recommendation for pay raise for everybody else.
Mr. President, I move that the Board approve a pay raise of 3.1% for classified staff and administrators for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board approve a pay raise of 3.1% for classified staff and administrators for the 2021, 2022 school year. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried. A hazard mitigation plan.
Phil sent me this resolution and asked that the district, the school district approve this. There is a litigation plan. If you would like to review the 442 pages of that plan, if you have time to do that this weekend, I don't know. I think it's tied to funding. If we would have a, have a, in some FEMA funds or Homeland Security help, if there's a disaster in the community, it's all kind of tied to that. I would recommend we approve that resolution.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the resolution to adopt the hazard mitigation plan as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Board member activities and reports. Mr. White.
All I have is thank you guys for your support for this year. It's been kind of crazy and it's pretty good to shut the door this year and hopefully we're going. I think we did a really good job for what I've talked to people around and stuff. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. We appreciate what you guys do. Mr. Mutter.
We've been working on updating our math curriculum resources, and we narrowed it down to two. The cost was significantly different, 15,000 compared to about 24,000. Looking at the reviews, reviewing ourselves, they're virtually identical. So reveal math is the one we chose to go to. It's a little cheaper. And signed that purchase order and sent that order on, but we'll have updated resources for next year. The greenhouse parts have been arriving. Won't be able to get in there and do any concrete work until August, so obviously the shed has to get out of the way, too. It's empty and detached, so it's ready to go out. So we'll be pushing and starting the school before we get all that. Board elections, we have three spots and three incumbents filed in the post, so it's like we'll have the same board. Shared this with you a little bit ago. Public information here is we'll see an increase of about 68,000 this year. We base that number on our enrollment from prior year or the year before that. So last year, our enrollment number was 307. Year before that was 312 and a half. If we have a lot more kids enroll this next year, that helps our waitings. So the waitings could be higher, but we still use that 312 and a half number. So there could be some fluctuation there. We did see that a little bit this year with fewer kids. Our waiting was a little lower, I'd say. The next year, looking at about $80,000 increase, but that's based on 312. So if we're lower than 312 this year, then that would change a little bit. We'll be attending the budget workshop this week. One change, it's complicated. I'll try not to editorialize too much, but some opponents of public education, it's good if we have more stuff that goes in the paper that says, "I'm raising your taxes." Whether we are or not, somehow that legislation keeps getting through there in the name of transparency. We have our budget hearing every year. We put our information on the website. We publish the budget every year. We're very transparent. So this new publication requirement, I think they have it worked out where it can be part of the regular budget publication, but there would be a separate notification that refers to the revenue neutral rate. So when you say that to me, that means the mill rate that will have the district collect the same amount of revenue next year as it did this year. So basically, your taxes are going to stay the same. We're getting the same amount of tax revenue. That's not what it is. So the county clerk will notify our district this week. Have we been notified yet? What our revenue neutral rate is. So it's a mill rate. If it's above that, we have to publicize. If it's below that, we don't. Then we need to notify by July 20th the county clerk what our tax rate is for the new year. So we have to have our budget done by July 20th, which the budget really isn't due until August 25th. So we have to know what our tax rate is going to be. And then if it's above that revenue neutral rate, we have to hold the hearing, and then we have to publicize that, that we're going to exceed that rate, and then go through the process. So we're actually delaying our budget a little bit. So instead of August 25th, now we're pushing it back to September 20th, where our budget needs to be done. Well, state statute says the budget is due to the county clerk and the KSB by August 25th. Unless you're going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, then it's a later date. So here's the, I guess, the crazy thing about that, the way the law reads. So our tax levy is based on valuation from the general fund. So the home, your home's value, they exclude the first $20,000 of that on the general fund valuation. So that's why the general fund valuation is lower. So for our LOB and capital outlay, every dollar of your home's value is included in that. For the general fund, it excludes the first $20,000. So we collect this amount for 20 mills on the general fund, then we collect this, these dollars at that rate for all the other funds. So it gives us a total of what the tax levy, the taxes that we levy, revenue numbers, and overall mill rate. So the law says the taxes levying divided by the total valuation is what our revenue neutral rate. Well, it doesn't include this lower valuation. So the tax dollars that we levy total is here, and our valuation this past year was this. Dividing that out is 50.5 is our revenue neutral rate. So if we have a mill levy higher than 50.5, we're exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Even if we lower it by seven tenths of a mill and our mill levy is 51, our mill levy is lower next year than it was this year, but we're exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
So basically, we just publish every year that we're increasing taxes.
Yes, we're lying to the public by telling them we're increasing taxes when we're not. So that's the maddening thing about this law, the way it reads, is almost every year, almost every district will exceed the revenue neutral rate. So.
Who's the author of this?
I don't know. Kansas Policy Institute, I'm guessing, had something to do with it, but I don't know the answer to that for sure. So that's another publication. I don't think it's going to cause much trouble, but there may be some questions when the budget is published, so we keep increasing our taxes every year.
So we've struggled in the past sometimes getting information from the state to set our budget. Do they have any requirements in place to make sure we're okay?
Just delaying that till September 20th.
So just kind of by the time we're done.
Yeah. So publication is up. I don't think it's going to cause too many headaches for us, but might just throw up some red flags for folks that watch that. And it's tough to explain exceeding the revenue neutral rate, and there's times where we do levy more taxes than every year. One thing that will help us this year is our valuation went up about 8%. So that should help our mill levy a little bit, maybe a couple of mills. See what's with the budget.
I just say call Josh and give him a number.
So we'll see how that plays out. I think it's more of a nuisance than anything, creating questions where there doesn't even So timeline, I don't know how much different we're going to be, but we're going to be pushed back a little bit, and then we have to have it all finalized. Subpay, that will come up in our organizational meeting next month. I'm looking at increasing that from $100 to $110. That'll be 110% increase. Spend about 30 grand on subs a year, so 30 grand increase there. I don't know how much we use that, but if you have concern with that, let me know. I think we need to, we need to be competitive there. Are we behind or under distance? Some, yeah. I think great bend is a little more. Are they 110?
I think so.
And talking with our neighbors there, they're good at that as well. We'll try to stay the same so we're not competing unnecessarily. We have our foundation golf tournament on Saturday. Not all put together. We have 10 teams signed up, lots of donations, very grateful for our community. Just sick Lisa on all the businesses and they can't say no to her. We are going to use this event to kind of promote our foundation. That's another part of this, is just generating some discussion about it, so making sure the people that are playing out there know we're doing some good things with community donations and scholarships and the greenhouse project and all of those things. All of our sponsors will get a, get recognized with a plaque. Adam's making these, so the whole sponsors, these will be out there to advertise for the sponsors, and they know they can take this with them, have something to hang in their office or whatever. Also, the laser engraver, maybe these is paid for, at least half of it was to the foundation. Timing's not good. We hope to have it later in the fall or later in the summer next year. One thing that came up, we got a delinquent notice on our real estate taxes. But we don't pay real estate taxes, so with the Garner house that was donated and the rec building, we had to go through the process of taking those off the tax rolls. Well, the taxes were owed for the first part of the year, like it was July 20th, about halfway through the year for both of them, both the house and the rec building that we, when the board of taxpayers approved that to be tax exempt. So when we purchased the rec building, that amount of that, the first half of the taxes was credited to us. We didn't know we needed to pay it, and nothing, we were not informed of any of that, but it was on the garners to pay it, but through the real estate settlement, it was credited to us, so we were on the hook to pay for that. Basically, garners paid us, so we didn't pay the taxes, but there was no notification that it was due. And same thing on the house, we just didn't have an agreement. It was donated, we're going to cut it down, so it's $300 and like $1,400 for the building, so. So the county treasurer, she understands that we didn't owe the four million taxes or penalties or interest or anything. If you see that come across, it'd be paid for the real estate taxes as part of that settlement in taxes we're actually due. There's no taxes due in the. That's all I have from my part.
I have one thing on mine, if you don't mind. We do have five shooters going to Sedwick this coming weekend and shooting at the state competition. Possibly a cool experience for them. I think some of them went there in shock this last weekend and got a feel for it, but...
Do you have their names?
I do. Sorry to put you on the spot. Nick Houston.
Okay.
Dean Tanner. Roger Gruber. Rudy Ue. And one other, I think Weston. I'm not sure about that. We do have them that are going to get to experience that. They'll shoot at 11 o'clock.
You can actually go there for this one.
Yeah, that's the one that they...
That's cool.
I'll try, and I'm going to go over to it. I'll try and get some pictures and information out on our website.
Push the water, too. It'll be hot.
I will. All right.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. White. All right. Executive session. Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss individuals being considered for hire pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included, and that they return to open session at 7:58 in this room. It's been moved in second and that the board go into executive session to discuss individuals being considered for hire pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included. That we return to open session at 7:58 in this room. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried. Resignations and contracts.
I have a recommendation for updates on our supplemental contracts for Justin Knutscher as athletic director, Ruben Martin as assistant junior high football, and Angie Webb as technology coordinator, who's, I recommend just approving that supplemental list as presented.
Second.
It's been, it has been moved in second and to approve the revised supplemental list as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Future agenda items.
We have an organizational meeting coming up here in July, so all the appointments for committees and all of that, so I'll try to get that to you ahead of time so you can be thinking about it. Board policy updates, and then we'll see what happens on the budget when we get to that. I've got to go all the way to Oakley for our meeting, because I've got another meeting and the county city meeting is happening. Need to get on it.
Nice course.
Next drive. Yes, yeah, if you're going skiing. On the way.
All right. Thank you. Motion adjourned. So moved. Take it. It's been moved in second and adjourned. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.